Okay, this is a special meeting tonight, November first, on public hearing on the proposed assessment. The project history for Phase 1A. So with that, we'll do a call to order.
Mayor Acosta.
Here.
Base Mayor Phillips.
Here.
Councilor Berger.
Here.
Is there, thank you. Councilor Richards.
Here.
Councilor Cross.
Here.
Thank you.
With that, to those that are here and also the ones that are on the Zoom, thank you for joining us this evening. And the first thing we're going to do is approve our agenda. I would like to make one additional item. Point number three, council, on our agenda, it's a motion of a time limit for our Q and A session. How long we would like to have people talk when they come forward to the podium, so. It could be three minutes, it could be four minutes, it could be two minutes, whatever the council decides, it's not a prerequisite for the Minnesota statute 429.
Mayor, if I could, perhaps the motion could include all of those three ground rules?
Just plus, plus the minutes to keep it moving.
The A, 3A is the three minutes as courtesy to everybody. B is a reminder that your, your comments must be specific to the assessments, not the construction project or background or any of those kind of issues, but specific to the assessment piece. And then C is that you would step to the podium as you're called and acknowledged by the mayor. And then hopefully, you know, your three minutes will allow you to speak sufficiently to your issues or questions or concerns, so that you need not repeatedly come back.
I'd like to make a motion, make it five minutes.
My second.
Second, sorry, discussion, we have, you know, a number of presenters, but.
They're pretty important subject, you know, so everybody understands and everybody gets what they want to say again. We're here to listen.
People like to, up to five minutes, I guess, if they have something to say.
You had your time, we're.
Thank you, council.
Any other comments?
I think it's good, let us see what they have to say, so.
Seeing no other comments, all those in favor of the motion, do you limit to up to five minutes, if I be saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, what was your comment, Dana?
Aye, aye.
I voted aye.
Thank you, but that's approved, okay, five minutes. So with that, we will approve the agenda as proposed with a five-minute time limit. Again, tonight's topic is assessments only. If you have comments about the construction or how it's being done or complaints, we would entertain those questions after the meeting has concluded. And we can address those one-on-one with Joe or any of the council members. Prefer not to have it during the hearing or the Q and A, because we prefer not to, we want to make sure everybody gets their comments in about the hearing and be respectful of that, so. Was there a second for the motion?
My second.
Jim, okay. Any other comments? Saying none, all in favor of the agenda is amended, seeing if I be saying aye?
Aye.
Oh, so it's approved? So our public hearing is opening at seven ten. And tonight, Joe Palin is going to, city engineer is going to give us a presentation. There is a handout of the project summary that was out on the table. And it has a front sheet on it, if you'd like to write down questions that may come up during the presentation. Feel free to make a note to yourself for the Q and A. The presentation will be published on here, will be available on the city website after the meeting, now your first thing in the morning, so.
Right, and I believe the presentation is even being recorded, so if people want to re-watch parts or look at the presentation, you have that up.
Use the PA system, we can't hear you back here.
Can't hear anything you guys are saying.
So there is an issue with the PA system?
Of course, of course.
Joe, one of the, one of the things that would help is that.
Which was a podium farther, up towards the people if you can. So we can hear you here, you want to make sure that, so Jim helping, there he goes.
Sunny, can we use that mic too?
Doesn't.
Does it now?
Ready?
Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
Well, good evening, my name is Joe Palin, I'm the city engineer. As Ryland mentioned, we are having, or the city's having an issue with the speaker system. And so I'll try to speak as loud as I can, you can hear me. But obviously, we do have a presentation tonight. We're here to meet about and discuss the Phase 1A wastewater system and water distribution improvements. This is a public hearing on the assessments. And just a little bit of information, obviously, we've got a number of folks here in City Hall, we also have a number on Zoom. Just so everybody knows, we are, we're going to mute the folks on Zoom until the end of the presentation, and we'd like everybody on Zoom as well as here at City Hall to hold their questions and comments until after we went through the presentation. There's quite a bit of information in the presentation. Hopefully, the presentation is insightful and addresses many people's questions. And of course, if you do have additional questions, after the presentation concludes, we invite you up. You complete that form, submit that to the mayor, and go ahead with your comments. So why are we here today? Obviously, we're here to inform the public about the wastewater system improvements, the associated project costs, the proposed press and the proposed assessments to benefiting property owners. We're here to listen to the public's comments and answer any questions that you have. And we're here to fill the obligations set forth in the Minnesota statute 429 that governs the assessment process. As the mayor indicated, there is a handout. Hopefully, everybody has the handout here at City Hall. For those on Zoom, if you are wanting the handout, which essentially the presentation does follow, it is available on the city's website under the community heading, under the wastewater project. It's also available at the same location that you found the link to the Zoom meeting tonight on the creative calendar. So there's a link to this document, I believe it's a four-page document and includes a colored map at the end of the document, so you might want to take a look at that as a lot of the information that we discussed tonight is included in that. And then also, as the mayor had indicated, we do want to have the discussion tonight, it does focus on the assessments, that's really what we're here tonight to talk about, and assessments to benefiting property owners. We will address construction que, construction questions after the meeting, ideally on a one-on-one basis to respect everybody's time. We do have quite a few people here tonight. So to get into the presentation, the project improvements. Obviously, everybody's aware that there's a lot of construction going on. The project improvement, improvements include a wastewater system, system, a water distribution system improvement, and then of course, we're observing a lot of surf, surface features, so things like streets and boulevards, grassed areas, wooded areas will be restored after the construction is complete. So getting into the proposed, or the improvements that are underway, first lateral sewer improvements, really kind of starting at your individual home and working outward from that. So people that are getting, everybody that is served by the project sees some lateral improvements. And so for many people, those lateral improvements start at your home and take the form of either a gravity sewer service or a low-pressure sewer system. A low-pressure sewer system is simply a grinder station that's located at your house that pumps wastewater through a inch and a quarter force main. A force main is just a pressure pipe that we pump wastewater through or lots of things through, really. The lateral sewer system works to convey the sewage from individual homes and businesses or community waste treatment systems to the trunk sewer system. Lateral sewer system, project costs include, you know, the small diameter pipe coming out to your, or serving individual properties, again, in the form of gravity or low-pressure sewer systems, the grinder stations. But in addition to those elements, it also includes the abandonment of the community waste treatment systems at the subdivisions, abandonment of private systems, if they're associated with a low-pressure system improvement, and telemizing and mapping of the existing sanitary sewer systems that were constructed in conjunction with larger subdivisions, those being River Park and Cedar Woodlands and Riverwood Hills. So what you have here is an illustration of the sanitary sewer improvements within this map, many of you have seen this, it's been hanging in City Hall for some time. But looking at this, sanitary sewer force mains are illustrated by the red dash line. In addition to that, we have gravity sanitary sewer, though then the green pipe or the green lines with a little flow arrows. And then we also have lift stations at the, at kind of the perimeter, some of the low points in the community that convey wastewater to other areas that have. The trunk sanitary sewer improvements are largely the larger pipe and conveyance mechanisms, so. And you know, the initial component or one of the components of the trunk sanitary sewer systems are really the gravity sanitary sewers, the larger pipes typically from eight to all the way up to eighteen-inch in diameter. And they intercept the lateral sewers and convey them to pump stations. There are five pump stations. I often refer to these pump stations as lift stations, and these lift stations again have force main, which we pump wastewater to. So these five lift stations pump all that wastewater to a central location. That central pump station or lift station is located in River Park. And River Park pumps that wastewater to the wastewater treatment facility by a force main that runs along Minnesota Avenue and Fortieth Avenue. So again, this is an illustration that you can, you can kind of see, I won't dwell on these, because I know they're hard to see, but they are hanging up and on the mapping that kind of surrounds it, but the lift stations are illustrated with the big blue dot, or the big green dots, and you can count to five around the central lift station here at River Park, and that River Park force main flows down Minnesota Avenue all the way to the wastewater treatment plant. The treatment facility is located at the very south tip of the existing cul-de-sac at Fortieth Avenue Northwest. Wastewater is treated at that location, and the effluent waste, the effluent water is pumped back to the river. The alignment is this blue line, and ultimately discharges on the east side of Cedar Woodlands into the middle fork of the Zomba River.
What about the west side?
So we'll take question.
The west side, you didn't say about the pump stations on that side? Fifty-two.
Yeah, there are, there are, there is on one side of Truck Highway 52, on the west side, there is a pump station in Riverwood Hills Park.
Knows that going across the hill?
The wastewater from that lift station is pumped essentially to the top of the hill, and then it flows via gravity along 12th Street Southwest, and it goes underneath Truck Highway 52 to the current sanitary sewer along Minnesota Avenue. Then it flows to Second Avenue, and then through the River Park subdivision to the lift station located in River Park that we talked about. The wastewater treatment facility improvements. The wastewater treatment plant is located a quarter mile east of Truck Highway 52 and about a half mile north of Eighty-Fifth Street. I, in close proximity to, or just about a quarter mile north of Orno-Oko State's mobile home community, if you know where that is. The wastewater treatment facility is a mechanical wastewater treatment plant that has capacity to treat an average wet weather flow of a point six three eight million gallons per day. So that is a twenty-year treatment capacity. And again, that wastewater treatment facility is designed to serve Orno-Oko the next twenty years, and also will serve Orno-Oko Estates. The treatment facility is a state of, state-of-the-art wastewater facility producing high-quality effluent that discharges into the middle fork of the Zomba River. The PCA has issued an MPDS, SDS discharge permit, and has also certified the construction plan and specifications for the wastewater treatment plant, and continues to partner with the city on the project. Here's a quick schematic of the wastewater treatment facility. As you drive along Truck Highway 52, you'll probably see some of the large tanks and structures that have come up out of the ground. Construction continues on wastewater treatment facility. Lots going on, ultimately, when the facility is done, we'll have an open house for the public to come, come take a look. The project also includes water distribution improvements. Those water distribution improvements take the form of lateral water main and trunk water main. The lateral water main, much like the sanitary sewer, consists of the smaller pipes. So starting at your home, it's the individual water service that goes from the main to the property line that serves each individual house or business. In addition to that, we've got six and eight-inch diameter lateral water mains that invade wastewater, just, I'm sorry, distribute water to residents, and also provide fire protection, so that lateral water system improves fire hydrants, valves, fittings, and of course, the piping. The trunk water main is really the larger water main, typically eight twelve-inch diameter in Orno-Oko. It interconnects the existing municipal wells, the storage reservoir, and the large population centers. So we really move a lot of water from the supply and storage facilities around town via the larger pipe networks more efficiently. So this illustration is just a simple illustration of where the water main improvements are being constructed in town. This is a combination of lateral sewer and truck sewer and the lateral water and trunk water main. And the water main is illustrated with the blue lines in the various parts of town, as you can see. And this last filler figure is the same figure that is included in the handout that we had, it's the last page of the handout. A similar figure to what's hanging on the wall, and it's been there for quite some time, but it's this figure. And within this figure, there is some color coding, so. But first, the project boundary, the areas or parcels that are being served are outlined in black. And then within those black boundaries, you'll notice that there are parcels, and those parcels are either, they're color-coded. So parcels receiving sanitary sewer are color-coded with that tannish-yellow. Parcels receiving water service have that diagonal cross blue hatch. And parcels receiving both sanitary sewer and water service have both the tan coloring and the blue hatch. Those parcels that we are serving have been broken down into nine zones or sewer districts. Those zones are illustrated on this map, same map as up front. And those maps correspond to the individual maps that you guys see that are hanging up around the periphery of, of the, of the city council chambers. These maps are also online, if you want to take a look, they're under the wastewater tab. They're similar to the maps that were produced in the feasibility report with the updates that have been incorporated since we went to the design phase. So if you want to take a look at your individual parcel or your neighborhood and see how the sanitary sewer and the water main is configured, how people are being served, whether they're being served with gravity sewer or low-pressure systems, and then, you know, which parcels specifically are being served, you can tell that within this map and those maps that are illustrated around. So this is figure one, or zone one, it's actually the downtown area south of the Zomba River. And again, there's lots of information on this, I would invite people to come up and take a look at the maps in a little bit more detail. Obviously, it's a little easier to see than, than what we have on screens here, but the maps are color-coded. They obviously illustrate the proposed improvements, the sewer, the water, the services, the service types. But in addition to that, we break the property use, land use down by color. So for example, the yellow colors or the yellow hatching are single-family residential, and so on and so forth. And so we also have a coding as to which parcels are receiving sewer and water. So the individual parcels that have a red or light blue or green dot, if they have a dot on them, they get a water service, or I'm sorry, sewer service, based on the little legend here. In addition to that, parcels receiving water and service get a blue star. And so if your parcel has a, a color dot and a blue star, you're getting both sewer and water service. Then we also have some parcels that are undeveloped at this point, but are developable and are receiving sewer and/or water. And so those parcels are not hatched, they're just white. And they have a large number in them, box with a blue box. And so as you kind of look at that, you can kind of see, in this area, there are, I believe, fourteen parcels that are undeveloped but are being served in conjunction with the project. So I would again invite people to take a look at these maps, I won't go through all of them in the interest of everybody's time, but there's lots of good information on the maps that illustrate what's being done and how it's being done and being served. So, project costs. Lots of information on this figure, project costs are obviously very important. This figure breaks down the project costs into different elements. So you can see, we have a column for truck sewer, lateral sewer, water main. Orno-Oko Estates, who's a project partner, has a component of the trunk sewer cost, we have wastewater treatment facility cost. Then we also completed the riverbank restoration improvements and stabilization improvements in conjunction with our MPDS permit. And then we have a column for total costs. And so you can see, in the different rows, you can see we have bid construction costs for the various contracts, there are three of them that make up the project. There are the construction contingency built into the construction costs, and then there are non-construction costs. Non-construction costs are things like engineering, finance costs, total warrants, different, different thing that, different things that kind of make your project go, finance costs. And so that leads us to what we call a project cost. Project costs are a combination of all the construction costs, those are the non-construction costs. And so the total project cost for the project, broken up by element. So you can see, for example, the truck sewer has a eight-point-four-two-four million-dollar project cost component. The total project cost is about forty-six-point-two-million dollars. And then we also have some information at the bottom of this that kind of breaks down how Orno-Oko and Orno-Oko Estates cost split is calculated. Orno-Oko's cost split is calculated based on their projected twenty-year flow. And so essentially, they're twenty, they'll use eleven percent of the capacity relief, but three plants, so they're essentially paying for eleven percent of, of the cost for that. In addition to that, I would also point out that the lateral and trunk sanitary sewer project costs include about three-point-seven-million dollars in street drainage reconstruction costs. Obviously, we've disturbed or will disturb lots of streets, and, and, and there's, there's quite a cost to that, so just make a mental note of that. Fortunately for this project, the city has had lots of success securing grant funding to ease the burden on property owners. In 2017, 2018, and again in 2020, the city worked with our legislators and successfully received about twenty-seven million dollars, a little over twenty-seven million dollars in grant funding to fund the project. In addition to that, we secured some million dollars in point source supplementation grant fund. Outside of that, we have a project partner in Orno-Oko Estates, they're paying a proportionate share of the project cost. And then in addition to that, for costs that we have to finance, we have secured state funding through the state revolving fund programs, the clean water and drinking water revolving fund programs. They offer extended loan terms, twenty or thirty years at low-market interest rates, one to two percent. So where does this all get in terms of, we've talked about the project costs, we've talked about the grant funding. What is the city responsible for? This is the same table, by the way, that's in your handout, if you're interested in kind of following along. So if you take the project costs, and of course, you pre-doctor grant funding, we have added some lateral sewer connections since the project was bid, we've been asked to add some sewer and water pro, sewer water services to the, to about sixty-five thousand dollars, so that's been added to the project cost. So you can see the total local share project cost is about twelve-point-two-three-two million dollars. Okay, and then we can see the different components of the local water cost. So for example, Orno-Oko Estates' share of the project is about eight-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand dollars. You can see the wastewater treatment facility, the local share is about six-point-two-one million dollars. That's important, kind of keep those numbers in mind as we move ahead, you'll continue to see those as we calculate assessments. But if you look again, that total twelve-point-three, twelve-point-two million dollars, that represents about twenty-six-point-four percent of the forty-six-point-two-million-dollar total project cost. So, you know, a little over a quarter of the project cost is being borne by, by the city. So the next thing, really, to talk about assessments, and how we calculate assessments based on the project cost. But we can't do that until we really understand the basis for the assessments. And the basis for assessments is what is called an equivalent residential unit. An equivalent residential unit is, for our purposes, essentially a single-family house, okay? It doesn't matter, in our case, what the size of the house is, the license, is the single-family house, what property value, where is it located? How much wastewater it necessarily generates, whether it, you know, has a family of six or a family of one living in it. Multi-family residential houses or housing is considered point-eight equivalent residential units per unit. So for example, if we have an apartment or apartment complex with three units in it, each unit is point-eight, so the total apartment complex would have two-point-four equivalent residential units, if that makes sense. So we also have non-residential users, whether they be schools or gas stations or City Hall or businesses, they're non-residential equivalent residential units. So we calculate their use a little differently, assuming that they use significant amounts of water. So we calculate, we look at those users, we look at their metered water use. We typically look at their metered water use in the winter, because there's no irrigation in the winter. And we take an average of a three-month average, and we compare that to how much water a equivalent residential user might use. And so we conservatively estimate that at each residential user might use up to five thousand gallons per month. And then we take their average water use in the winter, and we divide that by five thousand gallons. So for example, if they use twelve thousand gallons on average in a month, and we divide that by the five thousand dollar, or five thousand gallon equivalent residential use, that user would be considered two-point-four equivalent residential user. There are other, some other rules or criteria that we've evaluated. We have a minimum, nobody's considered less than one ERU. And then when we calculate lateral sewer charges, we only consider each business having one ERU for the calculation of lateral, lateral sewer charge, I'll get into that in a little bit. We also have some special cases that we consider. Should be noted that back in 2020, the city did a fair amount of work evaluating and developing policies on how to how to essentially equitably implement and assess folks for these types of improvements. And there are lots of different conditions in Orno-Oko. and assess folks for these types of improvements. And there are lots of different conditions in Ornoco. You know, we've, we've got people on low pressure systems. We've got people that'll be on gravity systems. We've got people in older areas of the community. We've got people on, on community waste treatment systems in some of the newer subdivisions, lots of different dynamics at play. And so we've got developed lots and undeveloped lots and so we did, we did evaluate some of those and some of the special cases of interest. Multi-use developed parcels with residential and business units. So we only might have one parcel with, you know, a home and, and, and a business on it. And in those cases, you can count each one of those elements as one ERU. So in that case, that parcel would be considered two equivalent residential units. Undeveloped residential and commercial parcels are one ERU if they're deemed developable by the city. So the lot size and the zoning and those types of things appear to make them viable for development and they have access, direct access to an existing street or alley. Larger properties, larger partly developed parcels that could be subdivided and that are obviously considered developable, always simply count them as one ERU. If the parcel subdivides in the future and develops, we'll offer that one ERU credit back to them and essentially recalculate the fees that they would have to pay the city for development and providing service to that parcel. So, so that's essentially how that's handled. So the basis of the fees can be assessed to the benefiting property owners. Again, they're based on equivalent residential units. In phase one A, that's the phase that's under construction right now. We have five hundred and eleven equivalent residential units and we have four hundred and ninety eight connections. That does not include Ornoco Estates, by the way.
You have four hundred and ninety eight what?
Four hundred and ninety eight connections and five hundred and eleven equivalent residential units. So you can see by that, there is a number of mostly businesses that are considered more than one equivalent residential unit. So phase one B, that is the future phase. So that includes everybody, all of the developed parcels that are not included in this initial phase. And so, you know, for example, some of the parcels on the west side, south of Center Street or in the Woodsview area, they're not currently part of this project. There's, you know, people in the Jassix subdivision, a few other subdivisions, the Cravat subdivision that aren't served as part of this parcel, but there are an estimated two hundred and twenty six equivalent residential units when they will be served. The phase one B improvements are tentatively scheduled to move forward in twenty thirty. And then phase one C, that's a future phase as well, but that essentially includes all of the development that occurs from now over the next twenty years. And so over the next twenty years, we anticipate about a thousand sixty nine equivalent residential units in the belt and contribute to the city, city's wastewater system. And so over the next twenty years, over the next twenty years, there'll be one thousand eight hundred and six equivalent residential units. That would contribute wastewater load to the wastewater treatment facility. And again, that includes, excludes Ornoco Estates, there's about a hundred and ninety equivalent residential units that'll come into the system when they, when they connect and they have the ability to grow beyond that to some extent. So we talked about the fact that we have the local share project costs that the city is essentially responsible for, and we've calculated the equivalent residential units that will contribute wastewater to the treatment facility over the next twenty years. And so we take this information, we use that to calculate the various fees that are assessed to benefiting property owners. So this table is also included in your handout. So I kind of pointed out the wastewater treatment facility. If you look back in your, on the table, you'll note that the local share for the wastewater treatment facility is six point two one one million dollars. And all eighteen hundred and six equivalent residential units will ultimately contribute to the use of that facility. And so we take that six point two million dollars and we divide it by that eighteen hundred and six equivalent residential units and we come up with a fee per ERU of three thousand four hundred and thirty nine dollars. And we do similar calculations for the trunk sanitary sewer, again, divided by eight thousand or one thousand eight hundred and six ERUs. Everybody that essentially uses the wastewater treatment system will have to make use of the truck facilities to get their wastewater to the treatment facility. So you know, everybody that develops over the next twenty years is included in that number. The difference in lateral sanitary sewer with a project cost of a little over two million dollars is there's only four hundred and ninety eight parcels that benefit directly from that. And so we take that two million dollars and we divide that by the four hundred and ninety eight ERUs and we come up with a fee of about forty one hundred and fifty five, fifty seven dollars. So if you add up those three fees, the total wastewater system fee assessment for one ERU is eight thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars. As we noted in the information that was mailed to you, the wastewater system, one ERU, I guess all of the assessments are assessed over a thirty year term at about two point zero four seven percent interest. If you do the math on that and you put that on a monthly basis, it comes out to about thirty three dollars a month. Now, we're not assessing people on a monthly basis. It's just, just for comparison, people like to see that and think about things on a monthly basis. Assessments are placed and billed to you in conjunction with Oldstead County tax, property taxes. The water system, lateral water main service fee assessments. With like the sanitary sewer, we assess the water main based on the project costs, divided by the number of ERUs being served. In this case, we've got about nine hundred and five thousand dollars project cost divided by a hundred and thirty one point six ERU. That yields a calculated assessment per ERU of six thousand eight hundred and seventy five dollars. The water improvements are assessed over a twenty year term at about two point two five two percent interest on a monthly basis that equates to just about thirty six dollars a month. I should also note that the sewer and water ERU calculations and ultimately the costs are exactly the same cost that we presented in October of twenty twenty one at the public hearing that we held twelve, thirteen months ago. So kind of in summary, the total amount on the phase one wastewater system associated water improvement, project costs to be assessed to benefiting property owners is about five point three six million dollars in Ornoco, plus another point eight four million dollars for Ornoco Estates for a total of about six point two million dollars. So that's six point two million dollars that's being assessed to the benefiting property owners represents about thirteen point four percent of the total cost of that forty six million dollars. So we're paying, benefiting property owners are paying about thirteen cents on the dollar for the improvement. The future phase one B and one C improvements, those ERUs will ultimately repay about six million dollars over the next twenty years through plant investment fees and sewer availability charges. And they'll, they'll pay the remaining debt service. And so that remaining debt service of six million dollars represents about, again, thirteen percent of the total project cost. And so if you add up those two, the phase one A, which you guys are all part of, and the future phase one B and C, you get a total of twelve point two million dollars in fee revenue that will be generated to refund or repay the local share. And again, that gets repaid over the twenty or thirty year loan term. And that total twelve point two represents about twenty six point four percent of the total project cost. So moving on to the project schedule, this is also included in your, your handout. We are at the public hearing on assessment day, November first. We are anticipating that the assessment role will be adopted. And then thirty, thirty days later, we'll be certified to the county auditor by the city administrator. That would happen on December second. So then it goes to the county, gets incorporated into the property tax rolls and would be included in your property taxes, which would be due for the first payment in May of twenty three, twenty twenty three. And then the second half is due in October and that continues over twenty or thirty years, depending on if you have a sewer or water or both assessment. Other items to kind of talk about, the low pressure sewer system. Construction and actually connections begin fall next July, July of twenty twenty three. Substantial completion of the wastewater treatment system and the associated trunk sewer and lateral sewer improvements is scheduled for October of twenty three. So next, a year from now essentially. And at that point, once the wastewater treatment facility is fully operational, substantially complete in the list stations and the forest vein and all of that stuff is operational. That's when we can let people start to connect. So people can start to connect in late next fall or, you know, approximately October twenty twenty three. Water services, connections, they're kind of dependent on where you live. Some of the water system has been constructed and is, is essentially about ready to connect. But we're planning to let people start to connect in the spring of twenty twenty three, depending on where you are. Some people might have to wait for the fall of twenty three to connect if we have started to wind in some of the areas. And then the total project should be complete. All the bunch of this work, all the restoration stuff, complete by the spring of twenty twenty four. So talk a little bit about the four twenty nine statute, special assessment process. I know a lot of folks don't deal with that regularly. Really, the assessment must not exceed the increase in market value provided by the improvement to the benefiting property owner. That's item number one that the statute talks about. Over the comment and our objectives, the proposed assessments will be considered at tonight's meeting. That's why we're here. If you have concerns, questions, that's why we have public hearing. No appeal to district court may be taken as to the amount of the assessment unless a written objection signed by the effective property owners filed with the municipal clerk or presented to the mayor at tonight's meeting. Parcel owner may appeal an assessment to district court pursuant to the state statute by serving notice of the appeal upon the mayor or clerk of the city within thirty days after the adoption of the assessment and filing such notice with district, district court within ten days after the service of project mayor and clerk. Property owners may prepay their assessment to the city administrator within thirty days of the adoption of the assessment. The city council will consider a resolution adopting the assessment role at tonight's meeting. So essentially thirty days from now, assuming that the council adopts that, you have to prepay your assessment. If you wish to do so, you do not need the proposed project assessments are scheduled to be certified again to the Oldstead County Auditor on December second by the city. After the assessments are certified by the auditor, you can pay off the entire remaining amount of the assessment, whether it's in year one or year thirty or year fifteen or ten or wherever you want, you can pay off the remaining amount. But essentially, you pay the full year of interest at, you know, within the year that you're, you're paying it. So you pay it to the end of the year and then you pay that. Pay that off. No partial assessment prepayments are accepted. Makes the, makes the process a little bit more complicated than it maybe needs to be. And there's not a lot of benefit in that. So we're not allowing that. Your total wastewater system and water system fee assessment has provided within the notice of hearing on assessments that was mailed to everybody. And so all of this information's within that mailed notice. Just wanted to highlight some specific areas. And again, point out the fact that the assessments are incorporated into the property taxes. The first property tax payment will be in May and then, you know, October and then every year successfully, successfully help the assessment pay off. There is an option for deferment of assessments. Yeah, by you meet certain, certain conditions established by state statute. So if you're sixty five years or older, retired by virtue of permanent or full disability or a member of the National Guard or other reserves ordered to act in military service for whom it would be a hardship to make the payments. If you fall in those categories and feel that you need help, you can apply or you can contact the city administrator and fill out an application for deferment. You have to do that within the next thirty days and submit that to the city. Just because you apply doesn't mean the city necessarily will, city council will accept your application. You have to include some information about your situation to kind of document that, but they will consider that on the next. Just general notes about the project. Connection to the gravity sanitary sewer and water service improvements are required by city code within all months of availability. Most of those facilities, specifically the sanitary sewer, for most folks won't be available till late, late twenty three. And so you've got till late twenty four to link that connection. Folks receiving sanitary sewer via low pressure systems, you have to sign the access and maintenance agreement as soon as possible, if you haven't already done so. If you don't sign that agreement, no work will be done on your private property. And so you won't benefit from anything or any of the grant dollars that the city has secured. You'll have to fund a hundred percent of those costs yourselves. Doesn't alleviate the requirement that you complete the connection. Another item to kind of point out for the low pressure system users, you do have to provide a thirty amp electric service to power the grinder station and control panel. And the electric service must terminate an electrical disconnect located outside of the home near the grinder station. We are preparing a guide for property owners to complete the required improvements on private property. So whether you're getting a gravity sewer or getting a low pressure sewer system or a water service, we'll provide some information and some contact information, contractors you might contact, things that you have to think about to kind of walk you through that process. Those connections won't be available for a little bit now. At the earliest for the low pressure sewer, folks, it would start seven months from now. And for many of you, it'll be, be longer for the sanitary sewer approximately a year before you can start that process. But regardless, we're preparing that guide. We kind of plan to have a public open house that will present this information, kind of help people that have questions walk through that. We'll probably mail that out to people in invitation as well as the kind of guide for folks. So that, that information's coming and it helps help, help work through that process of completing the connections. There is a lot of information available for you. If you want more information, go to the city website, the community heading, the wastewater project. There's all kinds of information. Tonight's handouts are there. You can see tonight's presentation there. There are figures, same figures that are hanging on the wall for the assessment roles. The frequently asked questions document is a great document. In fact, there are, I think, four of them covering different phases of the project, different, different areas. Lots of information that, that will answer the majority of people's questions. If you want to take a look at that and receive those or don't know where your copy is, go on the website, download that. Of course, the feasibility report's there. And then the last thing, there is a resident construction update that we send out every other week and we've got about Oh, I think two hundred and fifty people on that email list, it goes out by email, I know there's a lot more people. That are not on that email list, I would strongly encourage you to sign up to get that resident construction update. Because there is lots of information that helps facilitate the process. And you can't disseminate that very easily if we don't have email addresses, so if we can share those, that would be helpful. We also post that stuff at city hall and in other places if you want to come to get it. So on that. That is all the information we have, in terms of the presentation, we can start. Questions or comments, you have a kind of an illustration or picture of the wastewater treatment facility as of September seventh. Kind of interesting if you haven't taken a look at it. But set the tone, who has the first question?
Tell me what you said we've got to do. Get something about doing any work on our gravity, what do we got to do? An assessment agreement, what time in the next thirty days?
So. Do you, where do you live?
Maybe the bottom of the hill.
So if you, if you. Live in an area served by low pressure and you would be. You have to sign a access maintenance agreement. So the access agreement allows us to come in and construct that facility. And use state dollars on the property and then the maintenance agreement allows the city to essentially operate and maintain that facility. For the life of the facility, but we can't come into your property and build that. And especially use, you know, the state dollars for improvements on private property unless you give us. Permission to do so now, over the last. A little over a year now, we've been asking and disseminating those agreements. So I'm sure that, have you lived in your home for long?
Thirty years.
So you have undoubtedly gotten the agreement. You've been contacted by Linda Brown or Real Estate folks?
I have, no.
Okay, well, why don't you leave your name with me and I'll make sure that she gets you to those agreements, I'm, I'm.
I live right across the road from.
Okay, let's.
If you, if you don't, I guess I need your name, we'll, we'll get you that agreement. So why don't you make sure that you get Sonny your name and.
It's funny.
Sonny is the administrator.
And, and if we could, I know we have some, some people who have actually filled out the form. So we're going to ask that we, you know, focus on them first. And then if you haven't filled out one of these platforms to speak. Then please do that and make sure that I get it so that we can keep you in line and.
Well, I just saw a question come up on your email that said the person asked. Who is responsible for the hookup, is Orin Oakle running it to our house?
Let's, let's proceed with the Q and A as Sonny's proposing. And at the same time, the people that are on the Zoom. If I may ask, if you have, Renee sent you on a chat. You have any questions, please submit that chat and then we'll either alternate or we'll make sure that your questions on Zoom. That you have per the chat message, we will make sure those are covered too.
And when you do speak, we ask that you step up to the podium to talk.
First person. Our Q and A is Jeff Green. Jeff, do you please come forward and take your question, you have a five, up to five minutes to share with us your question.
So just to clarify, I'm asking a construction question, is that, can I ask those now or not?
Well, constructions will appear after the meeting, this is for assessment only.
Well, it really, it might impact that, I guess my question is. Are you able to hire your own contractor to bring your sewer and water into your house and, or your, or your property? And how does the assessment work on that and do I have to pay for that other contractor and the assessment or how does that work?
So. So the question is. What's the property owner's responsibility for, for extending services to the house?
Right.
Okay, so there happens to be a frequently asked questions. Document with this specific question on it and Katie's going to get that and hand it out to everybody that hasn't seen that. But the answer is that it really varies, so for water. The property owner is required to extend the water service from the property line to the home. You're also required to abandon your well and you're required to get a water meter, okay? That's water service, the sewer service, there are really two categories. One category is people with a grinder station and that are being served by low pressure, okay? And so those folks. That's a much more expensive system. In fact, the infrastructure on private property is above twenty thousand dollars and the state knows that, we know that. And so as a function of that, we have made an argument and successfully made an argument with the state. That as part of the project, the city will come in and construct that grinder station. Install the force main from the grinder station to the street. Connect the grinder station to the pipe coming out of your home. We also pump and abandon your septic tank. So, and then restore everything that's disturbed. And then in addition to that, we operate and maintain that grinder station. Moving forward, the property owner's obligations off the top of my head are to extend that electric service outside the house. So we can power the grinder station, the control panel, that you extend it from your, your box inside or your panel inside. To a point outside, you terminate with an electrical disconnect, just like you're. And then we'll connect to it there, extend the power to the control panel from the grinder station as well as the grinder station. So that's your obligation.
What if you don't have a grinder station then?
So yeah, the third piece, so that's the third piece, so people that have gravity sewer. Service, again. The pipe gets extended to the property line or just short of the property line. And so then work on the property, within the property to extend that gravity sewer to your home. We want you to connect within five feet of that piping coming out of the house. You do have to contract with a local plumber or contractor and have them do that work. And that cost is the property owner's cost. And in addition to that, you have to pump your septic tank and abandon. The, the septic system, and so typically that means pumping it and then taking the cap off. Or crushing the top and then filling it with sand and putting opposite seat over it.
So besides the assessment cost, you got to pay for a plumber to connect still?
You do, you do, and so Katie, have you found that Katie?
Yeah.
So which number is it Katie?
They, you're kind of tight eight to me.
Let me find that because it seems.
You said February, June.
It's the February. So in the February of twenty-two-one, frequently asked questions. There is a series of questions. What is the low pressure sewer system, will my parcel receive municipal water? You would have been contacted if, if that is indeed.
I just purchased property, I could, like a weekend ago.
Okay, and where are you located then?
Right on Minnesota Avenue.
So you are probably a gravity sewer system.
Low pressure?
Not to low pressure.
How do I hold my journal just to make sure that I don't send that document?
We can find out where you have.
So the one that you'd be interested in is number twelve. In this document, what, what are the property owner's obligations? So this is the frequently asked questions document that was issued in February of twenty-two-one. Number twelve specifically, will be the one that would address your questions, if you get that gentleman number twelve. So there really is a lot of good information in that, I would encourage people to read that.
The next person is, is Kelly Pike, thirty-five Ninth Avenue Northwest. She had the question about the cost for assessment increase.
Just to, just to clarify, so what you just stated, that I'm, I'm going to be on a grinder station. So you're going to come in and do everything to the house, I just have to make sure I have my thirty amp service. Is that construction included in this assessment fee?
Yes.
Of the fifteen thousand?
Yeah, yeah, the agreement is signed.
Yes.
If the agreement is signed, the city will come in and have the authority to do that. If, if you do not sign the agreement, you, you still get assessed the same amount.
Right.
But. The obligation to complete the connection and install the grinder station.
Is on the property owner.
Is on the property owner.
Gotcha.
And so our bid to do that work for eighty-five of these ranges from eighteen to twenty-one thousand dollars. So it's a significant sum of money, so.
I just wanted to make sure I'm not getting billed, you know, I didn't know if this assessment just included what was done in the street. And everything like that, and that included that wastewater. Now, I have no information regarding the October meeting and the assessment going up. My numbers from February of twenty-one, okay? It was at two percent interest, that interest has obviously gone up, my question is, are those interest rates locked?
So the interest rate is at two point zero four seven percent.
Well, the numbers that you have now.
Thirty years.
The numbers that you have now for interest is two point zero four seven for the thirty-year term. And two point two five two percent, which earlier you stated that interest is anywhere between one and two percent. What I want to know is these current numbers that you have, are those interest rates locked?
They are.
Okay.
The loans have been executed.
Okay.
The bonds and.
But in February of twenty-one, when you sent numbers out, the numbers came to. You know, we're at forty-one million, which it jumped to forty-six million.
Yeah.
It went up, so, and in the original February. It was twelve thousand one hundred and ten dollars assessment. It's gone, and it's, it states right here, construction costs, but are typically within fifteen percent of the estimate. This is a thirty-two percent increase from February, not fifteen, that's concerning. I'm a single homeowner, single income coming in, I can't afford any of this that we're doing. I have signed your permanent easement to come onto my property and do the septic to help out in this situation. Still don't know to this day how I'm going to pay for the electrician to come in, let alone hook up the water. When you did your core samples up in the hill on Ninth Avenue. Your core samples, and I know exactly where the holes were, I was home, you went two feet. Four feet down, it's solid rock. Now you want me.
There's some examples on the table right there.
To hook up water and go through solid rock, I can't, Ellison won't even do it. He gave up down at the bottom of the bridge and told Vincy to do it. Because he, there is no directional boring up there, yeah, that can come up there and directional bore their little fiber optics all they want. Because they're two feet down, there is no directional boring up there. So you're not only increasing my assessment by thirty-two percent. From what the original agreement and understanding was when I signed up for this stuff. Okay? The interest is also gone up, I know construction costs go up, I know, you know, and I'm. Is this it, is this the bottom line, is this the bottom line of what, you can't, you can't go any higher? Than what these.
So a couple of clarifications, so there was an increase in costs, construction costs went up about twelve and a half percent from what was estimated.
Far difference from thirty-two percent.
Yeah, so the difference on your, I don't know how you're calculating the math, but.
The numbers.
The project cost went up about twelve and a half percent, okay? Now.
What I'm getting charged went up thirty-two percent.
Right, and so the reason for that is because our grant dollars are fixed, right? From the state, the state gave us thirty-four million dollars. That amount is fixed, so the project cost goes up, the grant dollars are fixed, the local share increases. And so that's why the local share increased disproportionately from the project cost that increased. And so we talked about the fact that, you know, the estimates are only within ten, fifteen percent, well, the project cost estimate wasn't. Now, we did go through a dynamic and we all have kind of experienced somebody in the.
What about our problem? Allow some leeway, allow some extension or do something to help people out. There's people that can't afford this, you know, I mean, like I said, there's no way I'm going to be able to hook up the water. There, I can't go through ten feet of rock, I'm not paying twenty thousand, ten thousand, fifteen thousand for a guy to come up. And dig through the rock with a jackhammer, it's, it, it's ludicrous, it's never going to happen for me. As a single homeowner and I'm not going to be forced out of my home because of it. By any means, so those were a couple of things, I do see here now. That the sewer is set on a thirty-year, that's that assessment and the water set on a twenty-year assessment. And divide it out that way, I talked about the testing for samples that they did, it was ridiculous. And the, the last thing is, I also asked about funding way back. You know, for somebody like me, I'm not sixty-five, I'm not a military disabled vet. And everything like that, so the deferment doesn't do anything for me that way. I think there needs to be some emphasis, a little bit harder work, but I'm finding some type of help. For people to be able to accomplish, I don't have any problem with moving forward and, you know, having cleaner water. And, you know, sewer and everything like that, I don't have a problem with it, but forcing people in this day and age. Who can't afford even half the time gas in their car and groceries for their table. Something has to be extended, there has to be some leeway, there has to be, you know, if you don't hook up within a year, you're going to start being fine. Stretch it out, do something to help us out a little bit. It's, I mean, we're assessed, we're going to be paying for it. Our plans, future people, you know, the one B and the one C, the future people. Are they going to start being assessed as of the first of the year, paying for the plant?
No, just the phase one A.
Just phase one A, so we're paying for the plant all on our own, they're not. They're eventually going to get use of the plant, they're going to eventually get use of all the water. But they're not going to be billing or being paid for it, we don't, they don't have access to it yet. We don't have access, access to it yet, but yet we're going to get billed on it already.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's as Joey explained it, because the plant has to be in place for twenty years. And so the first phase one A, the first four hundred and ninety-eight residents, you know, that's, it's an equal share split over the eighteen-hundred. So you're paying part of that, as Joey explained, the phase one A people are paying thirteen percent of that local share. The future growth will pick up the other thirteen percent, but they're going to pay same.
Where are they getting billed though, that's what she's asking.
When does their assessment for it begin, they're eventually going to be.
When they're, when they hook up.
So we're not going to be hooked up.
I'm not hooked up, I'm not going to be hooked up anytime soon, but you're going to demand for me to start paying. On a plant that's not finished, on pipes that aren't done, pipes, half the pipes haven't even been actually pressure tested yet.
The reason for that, that's a good question, why are we collecting in twenty-two-three? Because the collections, with the plant starting in July, we have to have funds to do the operationals of hiring.
Use the funds the state gave you.
What's that?
Use the funds this. Use the funds the state gave you.
They're very particular about how the funds are distributed and how we use them.
Okay.
It's the uselessness.
So just to just to clarify a few things on how the finance works because it is complicated. So it is a little loud in here, so we quiet down and try to try to um, allow everybody online as well as in the room to hear what we have to say. So in terms of the financing, um, the project's being assessed at this point in time because the project's being assessed at this point in time, um, because the loans have been issued, right? And so we have to start making principal and interest payments eighteen months after those loans have been issued. And so that means uh, in twenty twenty three, we're going to have principal and interest payments um, due for the project. Now, we say apply the grant dollars. Well, we have applied the grant dollars. They're being applied. That's why we don't have a forty six million dollar bill. We have a twelve million dollar bill. So um, that's that's how that situation works. And then in addition to that, we have to start operating that facility. And so that costs labor, it costs power, it costs, you know, there there are things, there are costs operating these types of facilities. And so the city starts, needs to start to generate um, revenue. Uh, one of the unique things that Orinoco has is or doesn't have is it doesn't have a utility. So you're unique in that most cities have utilities, most cities have utilities with outstanding um, revenue and budget so that they can they can pay for things like that. Well, we don't. We're starting from scratch here. And so, you know, the bills start to come in. If you don't have revenue going out the other way to pay, you you can't make this go. And so there is some pain with these types of improvements. It's unique from the standpoint of, you know, you're the largest unsuited city in the state. Um, that is unusual. Everybody else has utilities for these things. And so there are some answers to the questions you're asking.
So I want an absolute fifteen thousand six hundred and ninety two dollars is the bottom line. That's no more, no less.
That's what we're telling you, yes.
Ever. All my witnesses.
You're telling, they're telling you that.
And at that locked interest rate. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Next time is Flip at ten Ninth Avenue Northwest regarding your assessment question.
I'm not going to elaborate. Kelly already said, um, the assessment, I'm going to be assessed the same amount of money. Um, this is out of my yard. I want to know who it took them sixteen hours to go thirty feet. I want to know who is going to connect. Ten feet down, this is the wall. If any of you guys are wondering, take a ride down Fifth Avenue, look by the auction house, you'll see a wall that they're digging, a pipe.
Yeah.
This is what some of your yards are. Right here. Todd, Jerry, your houses up on the hill? What's that rock going to be to get that to your home? What's that going to be? Exactly. Your assessments are assessments. But how is this, how are you going to connect this to my seventy year old house? Jackhammering? And you want me to pay sixteen thousand dollars? For something I never signed up for? Which is fine. I'm all about approval on this. I mean, if that's what you got to do. Well, what Kelly said, how are, how, how? How are you guys charging on? For something that it's going to take forever just to do my house? And they only got to go thirty feet. So how are you saying that this set number is this set number? Because the houses on on West Center Street are way back, so it's going to cost more money. But you guys went, hmm, this is it. Forty one million is what we started at. Now we're at what, forty six million? It's going to keep going up. And I want to know why I'm going to have to pay for something that you said what you said, you said what you said. I'm sure all the rest of us, why are we going to be paying for something that, oh, in the future? You don't buy a car. Well, here's your new car, but you can't drive it for two weeks, two months, two years. That's all I got to say. It's ridiculous. Absolutely ridiculous.
Thank you.
So I would just add to the fact that it is not unusual to assess product projects before the improvements have been completed. And in fact, in this instance, it's it's important to do so so that the city has a revenue stream to repay uh, the principal interest loans on the local share. Okay, so um, city of Orinoco has done it before. Many other cities have assessed projects before all of the improvements are complete. It's not that unusual and state statute does allow it.
So if I just.
It's allowed.
Follow up with that comment, you know, we know, the reference to we as council, you may have stood, and for those that weren't living here in March of twenty fifteen, uh, we were given an M O U memorandum of understanding from the Minnesota State Department of Health and the Olmsted County Planning Department that we had to do something by March of twenty twenty to put in a uh, community or citywide septic system and water system. So we were given that challenge in March of twenty fifteen. So we went through a five year program of lobbying with our local senators, representatives as and also just working with M P C A of getting the permits in place. So in November of twenty twenty, we were able to obtain twenty four million dollars in bonding bill money, plus a seven million dollar grant. But because we were the largest unsuited city and with the local representation, we were able to get the funding for that. So when you say we were just implementing what was the state told us we had to do. And yes, it's very unfortunate that we're doing it today versus forty, fifty years ago, but that's bridge, that's one under the bridge. So here we are, we've got eighty percent funding, it's about seventy seven percent funding. Very seldom do you hear people getting eighty percent funding. Typically, it's fifty fifty. If we would have gotten fifty fifty, your assessment would be thirteen thousand dollars instead of eighty eight hundred or even more, we don't know. So there's a reason we're here and that's to implement what we were asked to do. And so we're doing that. I can appreciate the hardships. Everybody knows what rock is in Orinoco. Um, some are fortunate to live down by the river, have sand, but the river rocky is a dominant topographical issue that we're dealing with. And because there is a lot of rock, there's a lot of opportunity for if we didn't do anything, but there is two hundred and twenty two individual septic systems. If we didn't do anything for that, the city would run the risk of environmental damage to the rivers, the lakes downstream. It's a public safety as well as environmental is why we're doing this too. And that's all being predicated by the state. So we have a meeting in January. I think Joe will have more reference of information about hooking up contractors. Um, I don't know if any financing lenders, I know they did something when they put the water system in two thousand and nine. Here are a list of companies that will work with you uh, for obtaining those type of loans that you need to install the system on your property.
So uh, two points. To build on what the mayor said, there there is a lot of rock in Orinoco. Um, rock and septic systems don't go well together. This is an area with what we call karst geology. If you don't know what that means, take a look at that little schematic behind Sunny. But karst geology essentially means that we've got a geologic, geologic formations that um, allowing very quick interaction from surface water or water from septic systems or failing septic systems with the groundwater uh, through cracks and fissures and things that that develop in limestone and weathered limestone. And so that is one of the reasons why the state is concerned of the situation is here and why investment needed to be made. We we fully understand that. Um, but there there's a good reason to make that. So that is that investment. And then to build upon the the need for uh, pursuing additional financing for work on private properties. Well, we are working on that. We will continue to work on that. Um, the reality is that there are not a lot of programs out there that offer, um, you know, funding to do these types of projects on private property. So there are a few opportunities that I'm aware of that we will continue to pursue. Uh, these connections aren't required for over another year in most cases. Um, and so we'll continue to work on that and hopefully be able to provide some solutions to people that need help because we certainly appreciate the fact that there are some folks that do need help.
Let's take a a couple of questions from our Zoom. Derek Houbair. He's asking, or Derek, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Okay, um. Why don't you just state your question real quick, what you chatted?
Uh, I was just wondering, so we're talking about the cost to build the system. I'm wondering what the fees, the the monthly fees are going to be for us once it's implemented and and running. What are the service fees going to be?
The monthly cost.
So also an item that was addressed in the frequently asked questions document, um, I had a slide on that uh, at the very end of the presentation that I don't have up anymore, but I think the short answer is it depends on how much water you use. Uh, but we're looking at average cost of, you know, between twenty thirty five and fifty dollars depending again how much water you use.
And five thousand dollars.
That's both, so that is not both.
Thank you.
First you have to pay to use water and then you have to pay to get rid.
Yeah, that's a benefit.
Yeah.
Utilities work.
It's a benefit.
Can we get Derek's address, please?
Seven one zero River Park Place.
Got that, Renee.
So there is is some detailed information again, and I think it's the February twenty twenty one um, frequently asked questions document that details the uh, sewer water utility costs that are projected.
So the next question is from a Zoom user. You know who that is?
I have two.
So if you're listening to Zoom user, you asked about you're assessed for the overall project where you're with the space one A. It does not cost, cover the cost of a hookup with a water sewer, sewer, if it's a gravity. The home waters expense, if it's a grinder station, you need to sign a uh, access agreement. And the city and state bonding money will provide the grinder system. If you have any further questions, just contact City Hall. Okay, let's do one more from Zoom. Dee, could you unmute and ask your question?
Yes, I'd be glad to. Um, uh, my brother, my deceased brother, my sister and I jointly own an undeveloped parcel of land. And my question, I just have some logistical questions regarding payment uh, for the fees that were being assessed. And uh, I just, I guess legally, I kind of want to watch out for my myself and just make sure that I would only be responsible for my one third portion of that. I, do we need to pay, I mean, can we pay it uh, by owner, you know, how much we owe per owner or uh, will we be expected to pay for it all kind of in one lump sum?
So I can handle that question. So uh, the assessments against the parcel and the parcel owner and so we bill for the and the annual installment of the assessments because they're spread over thirty years for a sewer improvement and twenty years for a water improvement. Uh, that assessment will be, will appear as kind of a line item on your property taxes. And so whoever gets the property tax statement and is responsible for that would will also have to pay that, you know, that portion of the assessment, I guess, for that, you know, specific year or that installment on your assessment for that specific bill.
Okay, I'm not quite sure that that, I I don't want to take anyone's Zoom time here, but I uh, who could I talk to more specifically about this? Who would be the best contact person?
Just call City Hall and ask for Sunny. She's our city administrator.
Ask for, say it one more time.
Uh, Sunny.
Sunny. All right, I can do that. Thanks so much. Have a nice evening, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for calling in. Okay. Let's go back to our audience here. Uh, Joe Canower, eight thirty Minnesota Avenue South. Uh, he had a question about waiving the the water assessment we can say this here.
Yeah, I guess it's kind of a probably different than anyone else, but uh, like, so I'm being assessed six thousand eight hundred and seventy five dollars for a curb stop. And then yet I'll still have to pay five hundred to gas, maybe another three grand on top of that to get it in my building. I don't know.
Yeah.
Not worried about that part of it, but uh, but I already have water service. I have cities, city water. I have a water meter. I always paid my water bill. I have a permanent utility easement across the property next to me. And that was why that water line was put in there. Uh, had this been brought up sooner, uh, say like when they put the, you know, the curb stops in, this wouldn't be a problem. The water service was already in there when I purchased the property. I guess I don't understand how I'd be responsible for that. Uh, that was mistakes that were made by the city of Orinoco uh, deciding to hand out four water meters for one curb stop. It kind of creates a little bit of a problem, you know? And I'm not sure who made that decision, but it was made. And then it wasn't made by me, obviously, so.
I'll answer that, you know, it was owned all by one person.
Well, that that plot was split off though, that I'm sitting on.
Well, that one is, yeah.
Uh, well, it was previously, but they changed the boundaries on that only because we want to eventually put in another drive. So we, it was expanded some.
Well, Reed came to the council and we divided into five partnerships and Reed did it all.
Right, but the all the original, the original way that was split, the other problem was the line was running through the front of my office. I had a copy of that. And I understood that that was split by Pat Hall, not by Reed Hassler, just that one portion.
I don't know. I guess they have to talk to Sunny and have her look it up.
We we sure can, but uh, that's, you know, that was the original paper paperwork that I had on that.
So the the original assessment for the, to Pat Hall? So he got the assessment?
That would have been to Reed Hassler.
It would have been Reed the first.
Yes.
He would have got that first assessment. So he paid that or did he?
Yes, yeah, he took care of that. And you know, the the way the line runs down through that, I know it's not right in any which way, but um, out of about, out of four water meters on that, but on that curb stop right now, I am the only one in the septic system on any of them. There there isn't another one over there. Uh, which is kind of odd to be handing out water meters like that in the first place. But I guess, you know, I was just, I don't know if this is something that I'll just have to feel. Or because I I just don't feel I'm responsible for the curb stop. Like I said, I know it's going to cost me money either which way because I need to run that line in there, but.
But just a kind of a point of clarification. So just like on the sewer system, the assessment for the water in your instance really covers um, initial costs or arguably covers the initial costs that you weren't charged for, for, you know, construction of the truck facilities, construction of the um, water reservoir, the fire protection. It's more than just a curb stop that you're you're getting and you really haven't paid proportionate share that your property benefits for that because, you know, that parcel before it was subdivided was only assessed for one water service.
I do understand that, but I.
So that's the difference.
I purchased that property with city water and uh, and I guess if this was something that needed to be brought up, it should have been brought up well before because like Reed Hassler and I, we got along good fine. And if I had said to Reed, hey, we need to drop ten thousand dollars to have this straightened out, Reed would have absolutely no problem taking taking ten thousand dollars off of that just to have it handled. You know, it was something that it never should have been a problem. So I guess that's where, I guess it'd be up to you guys, but that is one that I would probably pursue. Probably pursue as of, you know, appealing that. I, I just don't see where that's my responsibility.
Right, and that's. That's what we, what the process allows us to, residents that want to appeal it. And so the process is such that if you want to. Appeal it, you need to make sure that you. I guess before you leave tonight. Write it up, sign in, signature, appealing what you're asking for and give that to, to Sunny or say administrator. And then. The same time, if I'm understanding correctly, Joe, I'm speaking here, but I think you need to, and that will go through, that's thirty days to. Prescribed before it goes to a court.
I don't understand the paperwork that needs to be done tonight, because I guess in here and.
Statement that you're appealing it for the various reasons that you asked.
That does need to be turned in.
We don't know the answer, but you can at least state the issue, why you're appealing it.
Well, yeah, you've got to state that you object and what you object to and why, basically.
Tonight.
Tonight, lose your prop, your, your name and. Property address and those types of things and, you know, you can certainly use just one of those little comment cards, I guess, and submit it that way, or. You know. Doesn't, doesn't have to be overly complicated.
And if you want to take one of those cover sheets that says notes, that's, that's fine, too. Yeah. Yet tonight, the only thing, other thing that I would like to add is. Um, and granted, I've only been here since mid-June, but, you know, one of the things that I'm seeing and I think. Various people, this is not new to me, but. But it's certainly something that I want to see addressed is there are. A lot of anomalies. In the way things have been handled in the past. Case in point, right?
Right.
So, so one of the things that, that I'm eager to do is. Where we have opportunities to make corrections, we need to make corrections. Because ultimately, you having your own facilities or structures and, and facilities to that property. Make your property more valuable. Especially, well, especially right now, your highway frontage. You know, that's. You know, that's. I'm happy to visit with you about that, but I, I, you know, I often say. I'm not responsible for the actions or inactions of my predecessors, but where I can make things right. That's what I want to do. And I know we have a team of people. Um, and on council and planning and zoning commissioners, consultants, staff. That's our goal is, is where we can make things better. That's where we're going to do it. So. If I could just add that.
I'll turn that into.
Okay.
Next time, person is tighter. Tighter, huh? One eleven-ten First Street Northwest. I guess Kelly addressed most of my questions, but. With the increase. So when you, like the plant, for instance. Submit it all for bids, right?
It was bid, probably, yes.
Normally. In the construction industry. If you go, oops, we need more for this because we didn't think of that. That's not their, our problem, you know? The cost went up, you said that, I get it. Things do go up. But you normally, when you bid something in that, that industry, I thought. That's your problem because you didn't think of that or you didn't look ahead or. Foresee a problem, you know what I mean? So I guess.
Just a couple.
Is, I guess the question is, is there bid, just a estimate and it might go up, or is it, was it a bid and you, that's why you accept it?
I am not contractor.
Right.
I'm an engineer.
But this affects the assessment.
Right, and so. Their bid is their bid, right? It's a. Itemized bid. That includes lots of different components. There's actually three contracts that.
I get that, there's three different.
But the, 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 the prices are fixed. Now, are there variables that will come up? You know, that. Things happen if you miss the valve or you whatever, there, there could be a change order for that, yes, so.
Okay, so you're allowing change orders is what you're saying, and that is what the costs of increases are?
No, so. There was a. Public hearing in March of twenty twenty-one before the project was bid. That talked about the project cost. Okay, and so then in. August and September, the project was actually bid. Okay, and so post bidding, we had another public hearing. In October. Of twenty twenty-one. So we bought it a year ago. And that was the time where we presented the updated project costs. To everybody, it was mailed to everybody. We had a meeting just. Essentially like this. The project costs were presented to the public and the assessments were presented to the public based on the bid prices. And if you compare last year's meeting. And the costs and the assessments, you will find that they're almost identical to what was presented in the plane.
You're saying after the bids came in, that's when you. Adjusted your pricing, your assessment price.
And then we had a public hearing, we presented that information to the public. And then the council, after hearing from the public, authorized. Execution of the contracts and awarded the word. And so then. Along Christmas. November, December of last twenty twenty-one, the project work started and progressed to this point. And so. That's, that's essentially where we're at, so. To say that, you know, we, we, the project costs changed, they did, but. The city has been very transparent in the fact that all that information is provided to the property owners.
I just remember seeing the increase on my, on the mailings, but I could have overlooked it.
Yeah, and in fact, if you want, I, I have.
I have the October one pass that you do.
I would love to talk to that, because I've got every other one, but not that one.
It's not on the table.
I bet you it is on the table.
Let's go back in September.
So Joe, could you specify? What I'm getting out of this, it's, it sounds like people think that. The cost bids went up aft, or the cost went up after the bids came in. The bids came in at that level. Our lowest bid was what, four million over? And I think that's what. I think we need to be very clear so people understand that, that we, it wasn't raised after the bid.
Right. And, and you, of course, have seen this. This, this is the handout that we had at the public hearing. If you, if you kind of compare it, it's, it's almost the same.
So why don't you make?
From October last year to this year, yeah, so that's, that's where they're. Stay pretty much the same.
Right.
The adjustment was. Prior to bid. Process. And the bid open. So what, what they just say. October, what was your, Kelly, what was your original date that you were looking at?
February twenty-first.
Okay, or twenty-one. So from February twenty-one to October, until October twenty-one, that's where the. The increase was that you would have seen. By virtue of. By virtue of the actual bids. That came in.
Say Sunny, that, I think we're supposed to sign for getting this.
Permanent easement.
Get that out. You have?
Oh, I don't have those forms. Standic was handling that. To allow them onto your property. Okay, uh, we can, I will get your names and definitely prepare for you. And can I just, I, I just want to thank everyone really for coming. And for being so respectful as. Your neighbors get to speak via Zoom or in person, so. My personal thanks for that.
Thank you.
With that, our next person is Michael Miller.
Uh, my question was.
Just, if you're, if you're, got your answer ready?
Yeah, I already got my answer during your presentation. Thank you.
Let's go to Zoom. Zoom user, Zoom user. I guess if you're hearing your question answered, that's fine.
If you have a question, maybe raise your, can they raise their hand?
Yeah, yeah, and I can unmute them, but I don't know which one it is, it's just too many.
We have two Zoom users, so would you please unmute and ask your question? Well, that's why I got neighbor. Okay, let's go down to, um. Is that the last one? They're all Zoom users?
They're all Zoom users, yeah.
Maybe we just start taking the questions. And answer them.
Well, that's their questions. Are these, okay, let's start at the top, then the one that hasn't been answered yet. Joe, you want to take that?
If I can't afford to hook up my service, just because it's a low monthly payment doesn't mean I can't afford the service.
In this case, what is the city prepared to do? And again, I, I can speak for myself and I, I believe, you know, Joe and I have been kind of in this business for a long time, so. We are familiar with some avenues. That, that historically have had funding available to assist. I'm seeing that dry out. Um, a lot of it and, and, and part of it is funders are kind of shifting their focus too. But that does not, leaves no for my heart. That does not negate the fact that we continue to work. Um, and try to reach out to our contacts. To see where funding might become available to us. But as Joe said, the difficulty is. When you're trying to do something for a specific. Property owner.
Right, well, what, what some of us are asking for is not to have a permanent time limit on, you've got a year, if you're not hooked up, you're getting fined. That needs to be extended, that needs to, you know, until. Whether the economy helps out a little bit better or the funding becomes available for assistance for those people and things like that. Not to have a cutoff date and, you know, the hatchet come down on anybody. In that particular circumstance. There can be some leeway there. I can't see why you couldn't have leeway for people that need a little more time than, you know. I don't know if you have a specific cutoff time, you know, like you need to be hooked up within twelve months or you're going to get fined. If that's the case, that needs to be re-reviewed in these tough situations. If the funding has dried up for those situations, then that needs to be extended to help people out. Without putting them into a major hardship, right?
Is that a true statement? That we're going to get fined?
So just like the water system, like Philly ordinance. Has a requirement that there, there is a timeline in which you have to connect. And so if you don't connect within that period. There is a monthly fee that you will, will pay. In lieu of. Connection. And so the reason that cities look at things like that is because. The city's operation and maintenance expenses that exist on that facility. And so the city needs users and all this money is being spent to extend infrastructure and build infrastructure to serve these users, so. There's obviously been interest and principal payments on the infrastructure, but beyond that, there's operation maintenance costs. And so we need operation ma. Or we need user fees coming in to pay operation maintenance costs. And so if we have people not connecting. Uh, it takes the cost. That people are, the people that are not connecting, it takes those fees out of the equation. And so. The, the bottom line dollar figure really doesn't change that much with, with a few less users. Um, but the costs do increase. And so what's, what does that mean? The other users that are connected to it have to essentially pay. The fair share of the people that are not connecting.
Well, that's what we're doing anyway.
Willing to do that, are you willing to look at that and go, hey, maybe we have to review this and maybe not have that cut off date adding here?
Yeah, especially at work.
Because of the.
I'm not failing.
Some of us are, you know, going to have to come up with thousands and thousands to try and get through the rock if we even can. You know, those types of situations. Are you even considering extending that?
That's a, that's a good comment. I think. The ordinance that we currently have in place. A lot of those discussions came out of our water and sewer committee meeting to council. As recommendations. Uh, I think Joe mentioned the water was eighteen months. Today, we thought it would be twelve months, or the ordinance is written with twelve months. So we can, should we consider something different? Ordnances can be changed with public hearings and everything, but I think there is a. A limit to how long we could really delay because, for the reasons that Joe stated, so. Maybe that bogey's eighteen months or keep it at twelve months. We can review that at the committee level. And make recommendations to the council.
When, when, when can we be here for that meeting to ask for that request? You know, a, a reasonable request would be two years. For some people, especially in the economic times that we have right now.
I agree.
In the situations.
I agree.
Okay. Not everybody's going to take two years. Okay, and yes, I understand the fees have to come from somewhere and you have to pay for it. I, I understand all that. All I'm asking is a little help. For the people that can't do it immediately. We're already getting assessed. We're going to start paying on it. That's already going to be a hardship for a lot of us. Okay?
So.
So, well, all I want to know is what meeting do I show up to ask for that ordinance to be changed to possibly a two-year extension?
And Kelly, I will say this, okay, the topic tonight is the assessment, but your point is well taken. And I, and. There are crew of us working on the, the code book and the ordinances, because there are some that I really feel need to be adjusted.
True.
And will, I have made a note to add that one to our list.
Okay, so which meeting should I show up for?
I will personally call you with that and invite them.
All right.
And absolutely, um, you know, one of the things that I know I work at and, and I know this council is very. Cognizant of too is being as transparent with you as we possibly can. I, you know, am certainly willing to field any calls. You know, making a point even with me, I'm happy to sit down with you. Joe, I would like to see your, um, your documentation. Because that will be important for me to understand your, your situation because it's before my time, but I, I want to learn. And so that's, that promise I can make to you from me is transparency. And that's why how we as a council. They've embraced that opportunity to, to do that and we want to hear from you. And I'm adding that to the list and I will personally, I will protect you with this. Okay, absolutely.
So let's go down, next question, Zoom. Scroll up, I think we answered the top one.
Did we miss one up above that one?
That was Dee's. Just answered this one.
So I can handle the hard time contractor. I, the question is, the, the resident's having a hard time getting a contractor to even come and come to my house. I've been presuming. That they're interested in getting a bond to extend the sewer and water service to their home. One of the complications to that question might be that we're not very close to the contractor doing that work and people aren't. Necessarily interested in coming to bid work that's a year away. One of the things that we will do with the. One of the things that we will do with the information that we put together for the property owners and. Kind of our, our guide, if you will, to completing that connection as we will. I guess my, my thought is I'd probably reach out to a half a dozen contractors who are interested in doing this work and give you contact information for them. So I will call them and make sure that they indeed are interested and capable of doing that work. And then give you some options rather than just opening the phone book and, and calling.
So what happens when a bunch of contractors, say I call ten contractors and they all go, hey, look, you live on a rock. It's impossible for us to get your pipes into your house. I mean, seriously. It, it's, it's there, that, that bulb is there. Where a contractor is gonna say, dude, I don't have the equipment to get through all this rock into your seven-year-old house. Without wrecking your shit.
So I would often the simple fact that people have wells with pipes come into the house, how do I get there? Contractors aren't capable and willing to do things.
I tell you, Fitzier coming back up here.
Ellen's dad won't do it. They're one of the best core, core drillers in the state.
Yeah, Ellen's in the directional drilling contractor and directional drilling through rock isn't very easy, we are cost effective, and so that's not a very good option.
But you're not answering my question, what if, what if, what if we are brought to that point where we can't get contractors to go through the rock? These guys' houses, Todd's house, my house, what if we can't, Joe, seriously, what if we can't, what happens then?
Um, you know, if, if you can, I'd be happy to help you try to find a contractor.
Okay.
That's what the January meeting is for, so.
You know, I'm also gonna say, again, kind of bearing off, off topic, because it really is about the assessments.
Well, that assessment is brilliant.
I know that's part of it.
I'm paying for something that I'm not gonna have.
You're not alone in that, right?
That's why I'm asking for the answer to that question.
We're gonna work together and, and see what we can do.
Fitzgerald right now is going, why did I do this? Why did I sign up for this? I talked to him today.
Okay, let's try and get back on schedule here. Jennifer, Zebul at eight fifteen First Street in Orinoco.
So like Flip mentioned, we live up on the ridge, we're on First Street. Unfortunately, we moved to Orinoco about nine years ago, at that time, there was no option for city water or sewer. We had to pay over twenty-two thousand dollars of our own money to put in a, a well that met code. And a drain field design that met code, we went through all the legal and city permitting, everything we needed to do. And now, without any say of our, our own, we are being forced to redo all of that. And we have no end in sight, like Flip is saying, that rock is there. We already have a working well, we have a working septic system. And this is not a very creative way to go about things, to say you have to do this, this way for the city, because you're in the city limits. That's not a very reasonable request to make of a homeowner who has already paid over twenty-two thousand. And has a working well and a working septic, and that can be maintained and kept safe for the city and the area without. Damage to the environment, there are different ways to keep it a safe well and a safe septic system. This is a forced project. We didn't vote for this, we don't want to pay for something we don't want or need. You're asking us to pay above and beyond, you're forcing us to put in a grinder system. And pay extra for that grinding system, as well as for the amp system, the, the thirty amp electrical. That's not included, you have only certain people doing the grinder system, only certain people have to pay for that thirty amp. I don't know what that costs, I don't want to know what that costs, I didn't want it, I don't want to pay for it. Even the, the amounts here with the. Four hundred and ninety-eight people on the lateral sewer connection, why is that divided by only four hundred and ninety-eight people? Why not the hun- one thousand eight hundred and six? Everybody should carry the same weight, if we're being forced to do something for the good of the city, why are some of us having to bear a. Far larger portion of the cost, where we didn't want it in the first place? That's not right. We talk about different improvements and benefits, I don't see any of this as an improvement or benefit. I've had to spend countless hours talking with my husband about something I don't want to talk about. I'm away from my kids tonight, I have no time for this. I have more important things to do with my time than come to meetings like this and wade through all these papers. We're supposed to be coming to meetings and reading this paperwork, I don't have time for that. I work hard every day, I have a family to raise, that's where I want to put my time. Not coming and talking to people about things I don't want to even have as a part of my life. This is the demand of my time, I don't, I don't even have a say about, I can come to every meeting, I can read every paper. I don't have a say about any of this, none of us do. This is really un-American, this is not what our country is about. This is private property, we moved to Orinoco for small town values, this is a sham. Nine hundred, that was the population, we thought we were getting a place where we could raise our family and work hard and be an active part in this country. And all this is, is big government forcing their way. The, the people can pay for it, the people can pay for it, they can work and they can work and they can pay, this is ridiculous. I have so much more to say, but I don't even know what my five minutes is like, I do not talk in front of crowds, this is way above my comfort levels. But I can't just sit home and let this go unanswered, you need to see what you're doing to people.
So Jen, I, I can, I totally empathize with you, I live up in that neighborhood. I mean, it doesn't matter where I live, but I don't want you to think the city council is making this happen. The state is telling us that we have to do it, we all have to do it.
But you're the one who has, had a say about things like this. This chart, we just talked about it, it says four hundred and ninety-eight people for lateral sewer connection. Why is it that that gets to be only four hundred and ninety-eight? Everybody should have the same share of that. Everybody should be paying for the amp service and the grinding system, we didn't want any of that. If it's gonna be forced on us, we should all have to carry the same amount, and that includes the drilling for those of us who have rock. This is forced all the way, it should all be part of the bill, and this bill that keeps changing, six million, I'm sorry, six million is a lot. That's, that's not just, oh, well, things get changed.
We gotta pay, I don't happen to have a grinder system, but I gotta pay about ten thousand dollars to dig into my house. Where you gotta pay just for hooking up your thirty amp service.
I didn't ask you to do any of that, I'm saying, I don't think.
Our trouble is, we had so many public hearings, and nobody had come and voiced their opinion.
Hey, we're raising families, we are not just sitting by doing nothing.
Well, we can't let our town just go by.
We were fine without any of this, we've been fine for the past nine years without any of this, we still don't need any of this. If you have more creative ways of handling, I'm sure that wouldn't cost forty-six million dollars. And it wouldn't be going up by millions each year that we're digging through the rock.
Next Tuesday is a good time.
There's a creative way to handle helping people who actually need help with water and sewer, this is not it.
He sent the mandates down from the state, unfortunately, we can't do nothing about it.
That's not true, that's not true.
Not true, thank you for your comments.
Actually, my example, you have same comments or something different?
What was that? I could only comment if it was different, is that what you said?
No, I meant, that was a mistake, but you're welcome to speak.
Well, I, yeah, I appreciate what, I appreciate what Jennifer had mentioned too, so one of the. One of the tricks of politicians is, oh, your, your house value is gonna go up, you know, you'll get. Like Joe mentioned, wasn't it that we said our house value would go up, so it's no big deal if we pay an extra seventeen thousand? Is that, is that correct? Am I quoting you correctly, seventeen thousand up?
That's how the assessment statutes.
That's a sales tactic, when you get people to sign, you're, you're telling them, hey, the value, you'll be able to sell their house for more, you'll be able. People will, you'll appreciate, everything will just go up, because now you got city water and sewer, like Jennifer said, we got twenty-two thousand. It practically are brand new well and septic, that I would still prefer to drink from and use instead of city water and sewer. We have not had to pump our septic system, it works just fine, I don't even want to hear a grinding station in my backyard. The noise, the electric bill, you haven't even talked about that, what the, what is the electric cost of running on? A, a grinding station, because we have to pay that electricity too, right?
Ah, you do, yeah.
Do you know what the electric bill would be? Based on how you use your toilet, is that for what you put down there?
It has some bearing on how much.
And life expected me to talk about the grinder.
Well, it's the beauty of the grinder station and the maintenance agreement, the city takes care of it.
Here, here's the problem, so let's assume, you're assuming rather that the value of the properties are going up. I would argue the opposite, we have people in our neighborhood, neighborhood selling out, selling out low, and they want to get out, they don't want to deal with this. You've devalued our property already, that, that's what's happened already, but that's not in the numbers, that's not in what you're talking about.
Thank you.
Let's do another couple more Zoom here.
It's just a statement.
Just a statement. Statement, statement. So the bottom would need names and addresses, that's for.
That wasn't us saying that.
Oh, okay.
Well, we don't have any more on there.
That's it? Okay. Doug Gilliard?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'm gonna do something totally different, I'm actually gonna thank you guys for what you do. Your excellent citizen, the city staff. And our Stanek and Joe, thank you, before I chew on, ready? I, no, I'm serious, everything that those people have said, I concur, I live on five forty. It took them six months to get down West Center Street, it's rotten, there's no denying it. There's also no denying it, that the downtown Orinoco is failing. You can't even sell property down there with, because of the septic, and it's, you flush the toilet, it goes right into the river. You guys want to drink river water, sewer? No, I have a private well, I have a septic, a drain field and a mountain system. I don't like it any better than you guys do, but I do know this, that's a deal. If the city is willing to pay for a grinder, so I come here on a bended knee, asking you to pay for mine. Because I missed the boat and I didn't sign up, that's my request. That's all I have.
Okay. Yeah, that's, um.
And it does not improve the value of your property, it's expected to have sewer and water, as is plain in some.
The only value of your property is gonna raise the value.
Yeah.
So with that. I guess second call. For public hearing, if there's anybody else, that's all the slips that I have, if there's any additional people that would like to speak, this would be a good time to do it. We have three calls, this is the second call for hearing, for Q and A before we close the public hearing. Anybody on Zoom?
Right on the logo.
So, I'll just. Give a couple of my personal. Views, I also have a perfectly good septic. I joined council in twenty-fourteen when this whole thing started, and I remember when we started with plan five thousand dollars, and that's all that. The people could afford to hook up down here, and I remember that vividly. And I personally brought up the question several times, I'm sure it's in the notes, in the meeting minutes. What's gonna happen if it goes up? And we all know it was gonna go up, we all know construction costs go up. We all know that there's changes, I worked in construction as well, there's no engineer that can engineer perfectly, there's no. There, there's just, there's rock everywhere, everybody knows all the issues, so the problem is, is we knew this was gonna happen. But when it went from five thousand to eight thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars, that's damn near double. That's, that's outrageous, now. The whole thing started because downtown is where we have our lowest income and fixed income, on a good majority of the peoples, everybody knows that. This whole thing was started because of downtown here. I, I want a grinder pump too, because I want, I don't want to have to pay the extra ten grand to, to go to the street, so can I get a grinder pump? Because I love a grinder pump, I'm, I mean, sign me up, I'll put your electrical out there, I'll give you, I'll give you whatever you want. Come and hook it up, and that way I can save all that money too. And then you've got the, the people that are in the clusters that are blessed to be in River Park, and. And, oh, anyway, they're, all they're paying is the assessment too. So everybody's got their own issues, everybody's irritated about one thing or another, I totally get it. Unfortunately, we all have to do this for the good of the city, I, it is not good for everybody. But I just want to make a point that there's not a lot of downtown people here tonight that I've seen. And this was all started because there are a lot of people down here that can't pay for it that are on fixed income. So, the only other question I had for Joe was, Joe, we, we've jumped up in construction costs. What happens if we keep running into more costs? Where's that gonna get down the road? Is that gonna be on the city's? Side, or what's gonna happen as far as that goes? Because it's gonna happen.
So we do have some contingency with our budget, budget to, to deal with some construction overrun.
Because usually it's about ten percent.
Well, not usually, not, you know, we're, our construction contingency is two and a half percent, and.
Two and a half percent, okay.
And so I'm seeing that municipal projects.
Yeah, there's two and a half percent added on when that millions of dollars was added on from, from last October? So there's, there's a little bit of contingency on top of that, okay, so what happens if we run out of that?
Well, then we probably have utility. Pay for whatever would be over, over that, some users.
Well, that'll go into the fund that all our money's gonna start paying for, and it's just gonna have to be tapped on, and the city will have to provide that. Okay, and then, uh, well, that's, I can ask you that later, that's on something different anyway. And then, Orinoco Estates, they're paying point eight four million, we're paying the majority of that. Why are they not paying one year U per unit? How many units do they have? I'm just curious. Yeah, so two hundred comes out to be one point seven million. Why are they only paying point eight four million?
They benefit from the grant funding too. In fact, they're, you know, they were included in the argument as to why the grant funding should be left.
Okay, so because they're more aware, and they're getting a lower rate.
Not getting a lower rates, they're sharing equally in the grant funding that, the thirty-four million dollars that we, that we.
But it's gotta be calculated differently, because if it wasn't, if it was calculated the same as us, it would be one point seven three million.
Well, theirs is calculated differently, because they have their own collection command system. And so, you're getting assessed, you, for example, and everybody in here is getting assessed for lateral sewer, trunk sewer, and. The wastewater treatment facility through the plant investment fee, while they're getting assessed for the plant investment fee, or their proportion of the capacity that it uses. Not on a year, ERU basis, but on a percent of total flow basis, and then they're paying a proportionate share of the. Force main that goes from Orinoco Estates to, they're paying a hundred percent of the cost of. The force main that goes from Orinoco Estates to the wastewater treatment plant, and some, some upgrades to their existing lift station. Okay, and then they're also prepaying a proportionate share of the pipe size to go to the river. And then they're also paying a proportionate share of some of the riverbank stabilization improvements that we need to implement to. Able to essentially trade phosphorus credits, and so their share is based on those different components. And that's why the, the ratios are a little bit different than you would see here.
Perfect.
But the one thing that they do add is users and rate, rate pairs. Which, which helps, everything.
So they'll be paying the normal, same water flow charges that we pay? Yeah, gotcha, okay, and, uh, is there any way that we could sign up to get a grinder pump? Do we have gravity? All right, thank you.
Bone, before you leave. Bo, before you leave, I just wanna comment, you know, back in twenty sixteen, I think it is, when you were on the council, we. Fourteen, twenty fifteen, we were, council that time, we were making projections. You know, we had a couple of, one was five thousand dollars is what we like to have an assessment fee. We also talked about eighty percent funding. Those are the kind of two key things. And that eighty percent funding is what we used as our leverage. When we talked to the state capital investment committee, a lot of people told us you wouldn't get it, you wouldn't get it.
Also correct.
But we did get eighty percent funding. And eighty percent funding is, it's rather unique. It's not the norm.
You're a hundred percent correct.
And so, in the meantime, we went out and, uh, in October, or March, twenty twenty-one, we put our estimates together with sixty-six hundred dollars going into letting the bids go. And with the pandemic, COVID, suppliers, you know more than, well than anybody. We won up four million dollars our local share. And so that jumped it to eighty-eight hundred dollars, eighty-eight seventeen.
I get it. Like I said, I totally get it. I'm just saying, that's a lot of cash. That's all I'm saying. So especially for, I just wanna make it clear. And everybody knows that originally, because it was originally talked about, that this was all started for downtown. And a lot of these people truly can't, afford to live for month to month, much less have this kind of an assessment, or even a five thousand dollar assessment at that time, was even too much.
So we ended up with thirty-year loan, which was very fortunate to get that from the sewer because a lot of just working behind the scenes. So this, I think our property tax increase on, um, assessment that's being charged is about, three hundred and fifty dollars a year split between two payments on property taxes.
And they'll, they'll be able to do that easier, but also, most of the, I believe if, if, if I'm correct, most of the, systems down here are gonna be gravity. So you also have the lowest income also paying, another five to ten thousand to get hooked up as well. So there's, it's a double win. So, that's all I'm saying. So, we don't need to go on. I'm good.
Third and final call for public hearing. With that, we'll close the public hearing at nine sixteen. Do appreciate your time for the public hearing. You're welcome to stay as well. And we'll come back to the council. But thank you again.
Well, I will take a round for any questions people have. Katie Oliver from our group.
You said there was an actual.
I'm sorry.
People that are speaking will step outside to. Hearing has closed, but the meeting is still in session. So if we could, well, I will follow up with you at the end of the meeting. Is that all right?
We have to pass a resolution.
Yeah, okay. So I'm not sure what's right about the appeal. I don't know what's, are, as far as deciding what.
Riley, is that all right if I just head out in the hall and address people's questions? Let me do that.
For those of you who wanna stay in the meetings, there's one thing for you. Anyone go for them?
Please just step outside until the meeting is over with.
All right.
And we can come back in and discuss whatever we want to discuss. Just a few minutes.
You guys are all doing a good job. And this has been brewing for forty years. They knew what they were getting when they moved to Orinoco.
That is not true.
Thank you.
What's the point?
That is not true.
Well, it's not true.
We knew what we were getting into by moving to Orinoco.
Well, it's been a subject of Orinoco for forty. No, it started nineteen seventy to back to another.
Great job tonight, everyone. I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person. Sunny, you did a really good job leading.
So, um, before you have resolution, twenty twenty-two dash thirty-one, which is a, uh, resolution adopting assessments for phase one, a wastewater system and water distribution improvements. And, uh, it kind of summarizes a lot of what's happened over the year, as long as, as well as our public hearing. So, I would like to make a motion, approving resolution, twenty twenty-two dash thirty-one.
Wait a second.
Second is Jim. Okay. So, discussion.
I'm sorry, the only thing that I would add is the long sheets that you have, the final assessment role is attached to this document. So it's, it's collectively the resolution.
Yeah, so comments, discussion from tonight's public hearing. So of interest, we appreciate everybody that did come out tonight.
Absolutely.
And, and I, I would say it sounds like a common thread, the concern of those who can't afford. And if, if there's anything collectively as a council, any research that we can do or any grants we know of, um, let's try pursue it. You know, I, I know there's.
I was gonna, you know, go ahead and say that.
And I did talk to them.
Talked to Chris, okay, cause I was thinking that that might be one.
I know there's two O's that are blocked, but.
No, I mean, but that's what we're trying to do.
And do it. I mean, so.
Yeah, so I guess what I'm getting at is that there's, if there's anything that we know of, and it sounds like there is, let's do what we can to pursue that and, and help people out. Cause the last thing we wanna do is, get people out of their house just to make an improvement.
And maybe as a council, we can, like you were saying, maybe eighteen month to twenty-four month. Look at every instant, you know, whatever, you know, yeah.
And they did the same thing with the water back in two thousand nine. They came through with a list of, banks, loans, associations that would help out. Hopefully that still applies to twenty twenty-three. Uh, that there are that availability, but I don't see that in the SBA. There's maybe other, opportunities. But I think that's what needs to come together for our January meeting, uh, to share that with the residents and have that. I don't know if it's a public hearing or if it's an informational meeting at least, of sharing that information with the residents.
Well, at least they'll know that we're working on it as a council, trying to come up with, with, with ways to help them. If we, if we run into a wall, we run into a wall. But at least we've done everything we can and try to find.
If you see anybody stunning, very good, or Renee's very good at talking to people. You know, don't make them feel like we're forcing them out of their home. Tell them we're gonna try everything possible. Cause I know some, what are kinda bashful to come up and say something, but they.
Feeling the same way that we heard here tonight too.
Right, but the trouble with the, the poor people, what can we're doing enough more here?
Well, and, and I know when I talked to Chris at SITA, I mean, he was one of that said, you know, it's, it's really gotten tight and it's really, um, it's really difficult to get funding for a specific individual property or, um, but that's, that's when he mentioned the Rochester sales tax money. He asked if he had any more of that left. And it was kinda like, I haven't even already had some, but it's kind of, and I think that started the ball rolling too.
Is there a difference on what's available this year versus starting next year? Is it start over and that it might be available in January that we don't know about right now?
And, and the other thing I.
You know, the election going, who's gonna be up there? What kind of funding is gonna come? I'm about it or what we feel, you know, we could talk to seventy people and get voted in.
Well, there's, there's, there's money up there, you know, it depends upon where that extra nine, nine billion dollars is gonna go, but.
Exactly. And the, and the other thing, you know, you had mentioned about giving money to a homeowner. You know, if we look at it as, as a fund, and understand the ones who, who aren't able to pay, or are just on the cusp of not able, being able to pay, to be able to come to that fund. And it's, so it's not just for one homeowner, it's, it's for.
How do we get that number that's there?
That's a really difficult thing to qualify. We tried to do that with Orinoco Estates. If you guys remember, we tried to get them more money. They wouldn't participate in the required, forms and surveys that would, that would have given them more money. So while, while that sounds great, and I think that would all be a good thing, it, it's really a difficult thing to qualify. We can't, it would take a lot of, um, it would take a lot of work to make sure that we are, qualifying the correct people to receive those funds.
You need to be careful about making assumptions too, right?
And that's right. And so while I love all these ideas, I think they're, they're great. I think the best, work, the best thing we can do right now is to do our due diligence and our research into the funds that are already out there, instead of us creating our own. I think that would be a very dangerous and slippery slope for Orinoco to develop a fund for people. So that is just my two cents from Utah.
I don't, I don't think we're talking about developing a fund. We're talking.
That's what it sounded like, so.
Yeah, it's getting it from a third party, but, but not saying that we're, we're getting it from a third party for a specific household.
Then again, we would have to qualify that, the, the, each household. So we would have to distribute those funds. And that, that gym is, oof, that is deep, deep waters. That's a tough thing to do.
Just, just thinking of ideas on, you know, trying to help.
I agree, I agree. I just think those are probably not waters we wanna wade in as far as, the five of us qualifying people. I think that that's probably left to some other bigger, institutions.
Thank you, Dana. I mean, Counselor Berger.
Okay, so any other comments? I mean, those were, we have, we heard a lot of them repeats. Same time, they're all expressed.
And, and one other comment I would make, another common thread seemed to be that, and I, I think maybe it's a communication, that we, we need to make, because I, it sounded like a lot of people are thinking that, that four million dollars was added after the bids came in. And it wasn't. That was a result of the bids coming in. No bid came in at cost, the lowest one. Keep me honest, the lowest one was four million dollars over, right? Over what we were budgeting, projected, yeah. But I, I think, tonight it seemed like people were thinking that we got the bids in, and then we said, oh, the costs are up by four million dollars. Cause I think.
I think that, that's good too. I, I think also when I wasn't here during the other time, um, when you had the public hearing, I don't know if the people really attended to realize exactly what you were getting involved with. You know, and, and to me, this is when you were gonna get, the comments was today, and what was going on. But those comments should have been done last year. I'm just saying, but yeah.
We had hearings.
Right, right, right.
Last one in October, spending, that's when the eighty-eight seventeen was kept for, is determined.
I know when I bought my house, um, two and a half years ago, it was a part of the agreement that was disclosed that this was gonna be happening. And so it was put in writing, that we knew when we bought that, that this was, it was coming, okay? And so we knew when we bought that this was gonna eventually happen, so.
And there were some people, unfortunately, Jim, that were not given good information when they purchased their land or their homes. And that, you saw those people tonight. And I have talked to some of them over the last year. And, and I, I do feel bad for them because they were given bad information by, by people that sold them their lots or their homes. Um, but we as a council can't, we're not responsible for that unfortunately. Um, and we just have to move on from there and try, do our best.
I think from, from Joe's perspective, he's done this multiple times with public hearings, where he was very, adamant about having the public hearings, the information getting out there and all those notices going. So it's, it's not our lack of getting that information out to everybody. It's up to like the lady Jennifer's, it's a lot of information to read. At the same time, that's, um, that's what it takes. Any other comments? Dana, do you have anything else?
I don't. I just, um, I'm grateful for you guys being there in person and happy that, that I was able to join from Utah.
With that, um, all for the role.
Mayor Icarus. Vice Mayor Phillips. Counselor Berger. Counselor Richard. Counselor Cross. Thank you very much.
Resident is approved. Need a motion to adjourn.
May I have a motion to adjourn? Second.
meeting close at nine thirty-five or nine thirty-one. Thank you very much.